For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Call the order, please.
Eiler?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
We'll rise for class.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everyone had time to review the minutes of regular session, March 4th, 2013, and closed session, March 4th, 2013. Set. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during city council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records. No announcements this evening. The consent agenda, Bill's to be allowed, B, receive and file 2012 City Treasurer's Tax Rule Collection Report, and C, one city mayoral appointment to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring November 1st, 2015, and that is Brian Dort.
We accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Okay, this evening I have a mayoral proclamation. I will read it first. Whereas Mr. Carl Nenzewitz has contributed significantly to the quality of life for the citizens of Alpena, his commitment to excellence as a member of the Alpena Housing Commission's Board of Commissioners has been an invaluable resource. And whereas before Carl Nenzewitz was associated with the Alpena Housing Commission, Carl was a decorated WWII hero and a founding member of the Besser Company as well as their corporate pilot for many years. He has been married to his wife Alta for 60 years and has five children. Carl has been a role model for all of us who know him. And whereas Carl Nenzewitz became a member of the Board of Commissioners for the Alpena Housing Commission on January 8th, 1970, since then he has been instrumental in securing grants for the development of the Fowler Apartments and throughout the years has championed on behalf of the citizens of Alpena for the expansion of the Alpena Housing Commission to where it is today. And whereas Carl has been a tremendous asset to the Alpena Housing Commission Board, after 43 years of service, the Alpena Housing Commission applauds Carl Nenzewitz for his sincere dedication to such a vital cause. And whereas, may this commemoration provide an opportunity for the citizens of our community to pay tribute to Carl Nenzewitz and to express our deep appreciation for the many contributions he has made and the high ethical standards he has held throughout his many years of service. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim that January 8th of each year commencing in 2014 and each year thereafter as Carl Nenzewitz Day in the City of Alpena, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the important role of public service. Signed on this day of March 2013. Carl and his family aren't here this evening, so if we could, if you could come up and I'll present this, we could applaud him by all means.
We've got a number six adopted daughter. Number, number three. Number one is homesick with a flu and number two is in Florida. Number, what is it?
Four and five.
Four and five live in Denver. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, report of officers, refunding of the 2004 Building Authority Bonds.
In 2004, the city financed the construction of a Department of Public Works building through the Building Authority, who issued 1.8 million in Series 2004 Limited Tax General Obligation Bonds. Ben Zinski and Company, the city's financial advisor, has advised us that initiating a bond refunding at this time could result in a savings of approximately 114,643 over the life of the bond, which has 17 and a half years left. A refunding is an opportunity to advance refund currently held bonds. The city will borrow at a lower interest rate than the currently held bond and realize the net savings after costs. In the simplest terms, it would be like remortgage a home when interest rates fall. Process begins with approval of the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of 2013 Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bonds. After that, the city's Bond Council, Miller, Canfield, and financial advisor Ben Zinski and Company, request a standard and pores rating, prepare an official statement, price the bonds, and execute the bond purchase agreement. The entire process will take approximately two months. As the attached resolution states, the total principal amount of the refunding bonds will not exceed 1.725 million. The cost to refund the prior bonds is estimated at 50,900. That's your legal fees, your advertising, consulting. The city's net savings is 114,643, as I stated above. If council wishes to refund the 2004 Limited Tax General Obligation Building Authority Bonds and issue the 2013 bonds, the enclosed resolution should be approved. Do you have any questions on that?
Karen, what's the current rate we're paying on that, on those bonds?
It's 3.75, however, it started at about 3.2, and it goes all the way up to 5.1. So every year it gets a little higher with the current bonds, and the ones they want, that we want to refund, it'll be 3.26 approximately. They haven't gone out to get that cost yet.
Whatever we get, will it go up like, like the current bonds?
Some do and some don't, depending on who they negotiate with.
So you use 3.26 as a, as an example?
No, that's close to what there will be. They put that in, if you noticed, in your resolution too. I think they, I put it towards the back to give you an idea on the savings, the estimate only on that last page of, and you'll see on the lap, on the right column, it says 3.26 is the approximate interest rate. Once we give them the authority to go ahead and do it, then they'll start finding the best rate for us.
Catch.
Karen, I think you have it in here, but how many years does it take to realize the savings?
As you, on that last page again, you'll notice, we start saving immediately, but just a little bit, like 2,000 and 7,000 and 76 each year, about 7,000. Just because the interest rates are lower, so our payments are lower.
Will they take action on that?
Yes, I have, I have a resolution that needs to be have passed in order to get this going, if you do agree with it.
We adopt Resolution 2013-04.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Then B, annual monitoring of reports for tax abatement properties?
Every year we report on fire basements that we have given, and I'll summarize a little where I can and round some numbers to make it a little simpler. In compliance with the monitoring agreements included in the industrial facilities, taxes, commercial rehabilitation exemptions, and the new personal property tax exemption approved by the Alpena Municipal Council, annual reports of capital investment employment for the following firms are summarized below. Panel Processing is in the 12th and final annual monitoring report, and it was submitted on February 19th, 2013. This was a 12-year abatement, beginning December 31st of 2000 and ending December 31st of 2012. The original projected investment in the project was over 2.9 million, with an employment level projected at 58. This project is complete with a final total investment in the project of over 3.469 million. Panel Processing has been successfully fulfilling their abatement requirements until 2012, when the employment level dropped to 53 employees. Conveyor Systems, the 12th and final annual monitoring report was submitted. This was a 12-year abatement, beginning December 31st of 2000 and ending December 31st of 2012. The original projected investment in the project was 1.3 million and a projected employment level of 38 people by June 6th of 2003. The project is complete with a final cost of over 2.1 million. Though there was a decrease in employees in 2012 to 53, they are still well above the projected level of 38 employees. They have surpassed their original exemption projections for both capital investment and employment levels. The third one is Lafarge Midwest. On February 15th, 2013, Lafarge submitted its sixth annual monitoring report. Theirs is a nine-year exemption, beginning December 31st, 2006, and ending December 30th of 2015. The projected cost for this project was over 6.2 million for real property and 68,780 for personal property. This project is complete with over 10 million invested in real property and 37 million invested in personal property, for a total of over 47,799,000. The project exceeded its estimate for real property by 4.4 million, but fell short on the personal property by over 31 million. The reduced project cost for the personal property was due to Lafarge's decision to not install a new finish mill. Their application projected that 230 jobs would be retained and no new jobs would be created. They had 199 employees on the payroll at the end of 2012. This is 31 employees, less than their original projection, however, some of the reduction is from retirements. The economic downturn has had a negative impact on them, but 11 employees were hired in 2012, and more new hires are expected in 2013. And then ATI Casting, ATI submitted its sixth annual monitoring report on new personal property tax exemptions. This is a nine-year exemption, beginning September 18th, 2007, and ending December 30th of 2016. The projected cost for new personal property consisting of machinery and equipment was approximately 10.5 million. Their total capital investment was over 14.3 million. This is 3.8 million above their projected investments. ATI's application projected that 100 jobs would be created within one year from the start of operations and up to 150 by 2010. Their employment level was at a high of 66 jobs, but the poor economy resulted in several customers canceling orders. They are no longer in operation and have no plans to resume operations at this facility. Alroll Steel, they submitted their fifth annual monitoring report. It is a 12-year exemption, beginning December 31st of 2007 and ending December 30th of 2019. The projected capital investment was 325,000. Four jobs were projected to be retained and two new jobs to be created within two years. Their monitoring report states that they have completed the personal property exemptions to their facility with a final investment in personal property of over 388,000. They have maintained six employees at the facility through 2012. They have exceeded their investment projection and met their employment projection. And the last three are new ones. We have Dean Arbor Ford, they submitted their first annual monitoring report. It's a seven-year exemption, beginning December 31st of 2011 and ending December 30th of 2018. The projected capital investment was over 2.2 million. Four jobs were projected to be retained and two new jobs to be created within two years. Their monitoring report states that they have invested over 3 million in real and personal property. They have retained all the current employees and hired 10 new employees for a total of 27. They have exceeded both their investment and employment projections. Dugill Johnson submitted its first annual monitoring report. This is a nine-year exemption for both the real and personal, beginning December 31st of 2011 and ending December 30th of 2020. The projected capital investment was 351,000 for the real property and 75,900 for the personal. Seven and a half jobs were projected to be retained and five new jobs to be retained, I'm sorry, created within two years of completion. Their monitoring report states that they have invested over 380,000 in real property and over 146,000 in personal. They have retained all the current employees and hired five new employees for a total of 12 and a half. They have exceeded their investment projection and met their employment projection. And the last is David Nishaw, who submitted his first annual monitoring report. This is a 10-year exemption, beginning December 31st, 2011, and ending December 30th of 2021. The projected capital investment was 200,000. 15 new full-time jobs were projected to be created and three part-time jobs. The monitoring report states that all renovations have been completed at a total cost of 210,000. The employment level for 212 was 16 full-time employees and two part-time during their peak summer season, but have decreased during the winter season. So in summer, in summer, there are three new abatements this year, Dean Arbor, Dugill Johnson, and David Nishaw, then we have a total of eight abatements. For two companies, Panel Processing and Conveyor Systems, this is the last year of their abatements. All of the above companies have completed their capital investments and all have invested more than projected, except Lafarge, and though they still invested over 47,799,000. On the employment side, about half of the company's 2012 employment levels are lower than projected and are reflective of the poor economy that we have been experiencing. The eight companies listed above represent over 71 million in capital improvements. One of the major goals of abatements is to assist companies to reinvest and stay in the community. The other is job retention and/or creation. Though ATI had a successful startup, they are the only one of the eight who was unable to sustain their company and the jobs that went with it. Economically, the city must decide if the impact on the city's property tax revenue is adequately offset by the capital improvements and/or additional jobs resulting from the project. With the new state laws on eliminating personal property taxes, the city will need to consider future abatements. The loss of the personal property tax and the tax abatement may be too big of a burden on the city revenue. And I won't read the rest, but what we did is we put these procedures in on how we do our monitoring agreement, and we did that last year. And that's the summary of our monitoring agreements. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, I congratulate all the companies that have exceeded their expectations in job creation and investment in equipment. But for those that didn't, best that could be said maybe is that we learned a lot in crafting future abatements. If we were to come down on these companies legally or whatever, it looks like we're piling on a company that's already suffering. If we don't, it looks like we're not fulfilling our fiduciary obligations to the city. It's a tough call every time we do one of these things. But we've learned that maybe the best thing is not to give the house away in the first few years of the abatements and backload things when obligations are met, then the reward comes. I feel bad for Lafarge employees, the ones who are no longer working, they're a local company to us, but like ATI, they're multinational, multi-billion dollar corporations who could claim to be larger than the City of Alpena, larger than the County of Alpena, and frankly larger than the State of Michigan. If there were to be a spill or something, it would probably have to be EPA that came in here and helped out, because the rest of us are just not big enough. So I think with these ongoing reports, we have learned, and of course, we want to do abatements and tax increment financing when we can, because it's one way to bring new jobs and new dollars to the community. But a couple got away from this here, and hopefully when the economy gets better, at least Lafarge will improve. But if they added 11 jobs in 2012, they were actually down to 188 at one point, when the promised figure was 230. So it's not good, it's hard to blame anybody. It's hard to keep from piling on, but I think you need to be more forward-looking. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Seth?
Thank you for the report. That was very long.
Yeah.
I've read that much. It was very good. C is the 2014 to 2019 Capital Improvement Plan?
On February 20th, the Planning Commission and City Council met in joint session, as they have done for the past several years, to review the draft 2014 through 19 Capital Improvement Plan for the city. At that time, the Planning Commission did not have a quorum, so as we have done in a few occasions at that meeting, both bodies would approve the plan if there were no major changes. However, since the Planning Commission could not act, that was not done by either body. In the meantime, we did make a few minor adjustments to the plan. Most of them were grammatical typos formatting, which we corrected. However, there was one new project added, which is project number 57, which is the Ness Trailhead Project. That's the trailhead up on Woodward Avenue that we applied for a year ago to the DNR. Were unsuccessful, but we're reapplying again here in the next week or two for funding, and we're cautiously optimistic that it will occur. That project needed to be in the plan, and so was added into it. The other was probably, is again, more typo or formatting, but it was a rather big one. The water production plant clearwell replacement, which was, I believe, some $2 or $3 million, headed coming out of the IT, the fund, which is not correct, and so that was corrected to indicate the water fund, which is where that, those funds would come out of. What you have that was presented to you, included in your package, is an updated CIP spreadsheet with the corrections, including renumbering and the additional project. At its regular meeting then on March 13th, the Alpena City Planning Commission, by a vote of 5 to nothing, approved the revised plan and then forwarded on to the council for its action on it as well. So you now have that before you with the recommendation requested by the Planning Commission that it be adopted by council, and once it is done, then the revised plan will be posted on the city webpage.
Are you okay with those minor changes?
We adopt the 2014, 2019 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second. Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay. Our last report is the bow hunting, target shooting, and trapping in the city.
You guys are, that's for you, Bill.
I'm assuming when council read this, it was clear as mud as to what, what I was trying to say, but let me run through it. Obviously, there's three separate issues that have recently come to the attention of council from different individuals in the community. One is whether we should consider allowing bowfishing within the limits of the city or in some designated area within the city. The second was whether we should allow some target shooting within the limits or in a designated area. And then third, should the city allow trapping of animals in the wildlife sanctuary? And so I'm going to address each one of those separately. I'm going to try not to confuse myself, as well as council, but there was quite a few things attached. The memo itself wasn't very long, but there were some charts and stuff attached from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources that hopefully clarified some of the issues, but also probably created a lot of questions in the mind of council. At the outset, the city has, as part of its disorderly conduct statute, many different sections, I think there's 30 sections total, but Section 54284 provides that it's a disorder, it's disorderly conduct, and nobody can discharge any firearm, air rifle, crossbow, bow and arrow, or other similar weapon or device in any public or private place within the city, or have such a device or in their possession in any public place in the city unless it's securely wrapped in case. So right from the outset, any of these activities are currently illegal by ordinance, and it's a misdemeanor punished for by 90 days and/or up to a $500 fine. Now obviously, council has the right to make exceptions to that ordinance, and you know, several folks have asked the council to consider it and make a decision about whether we should accept all of these activities, one of these activities, you know, they're each, they're all separate issues, but any of those three requests would implicate that ordinance and be a violation of that ordinance right from the start. Taking them in order, the bowfishing issue, I had attached to the memo a chart, and the chart is somewhat difficult to read, but if you read through it, it sets certain seasons, certain waters, and certain types of fish that could either be bowfished or speared. And however, subsequent to me writing this memo, I did some additional research, essentially at the request of interim city manager Sunden regarding an issue of navigable waters and who had control over the navigable waters. So that creates another issue. In the state of Michigan, water is not navigable unless one or two things happens. The first thing is there's an old test, and that old test has been superseded, but the old test was, if a log could cloak down it, it's navigable. Okay?
Locking.
Yeah, so that, that one's kind of easy. The bigger issue though is the Michigan Supreme Court many years ago, over 100 years ago, said that a waterway, whether it be an inland lake, stream, or river, is not navigable unless a court says it's navigable. So there have been many court cases over the years that have addressed it, and most of the times that it's been addressed, it's been addressed because somebody has tried to do an activity in that particular lake, stream, or river, and somebody has objected to it. The way most of them became court cases was the people on each side of the river that owned property essentially said, well, you can't go in the river there, or in the lake there, or in the stream there, because I own the bottom land. I'm a riparian owner, and the general rule is you own to the middle of the stream, to the middle of the lake, you know, you own that bottom land. So the question was, when somebody, for instance, waited out there to fish, were they trespassing? And the issue became, well, if it's private property, they are trespassing. If it's navigable, okay, then it's open to the public, and the rights of the public to use our inland lake streams and rivers is protected by the Constitution. So over the course of time, cases like that developed, and certain areas have been determined to be navigable. Now here in, that's most directly related to us, is the Thunder Bay River from downstream from the Trow Bridge Dam, three mile upstream, three miles upstream from the Broadwell Mill of 1875 is navigable. I will tell you with all sincerity, I have no idea what part of the river that they're talking about, but that, that part's navigable. There are additional, a couple of other things, well, a couple of other ones, as follows. The Thunder Bay River in Alpena County downstream from Section 31 and 32 in Town 32 North, Range 7 East, has also been determined by court case as being navigable. The Thunder Bay River, the north and south branch, have been determined to be navigable. And also, in a case that involved Alpena Power Company back in 1921, the south branch of the Thunder Bay River was also deemed to be navigable. Because the area that I think the bowfishing is intended to be done in, I believe those are now- are navigable waters, and the public has the right to use those if they're not otherwise violating the law, so the first step has been met. The areas, the areas of the river, I believe, that are being suggested as being areas designated for bowfishing are areas that I think council would have authority to say bowfishing could occur there. That would be with essentially making an exception to that ordinance that says you can't shoot a bow and arrow in the city. Okay? However, subsequent to the Table 6, I found, and it's labeled in Table 6, it talks about trout streams listed in FO 219. FO 219 is the statewide spearing regulations, and it's an order of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. The legislature has allowed the Department of Natural Resources to make certain activities legal for certain periods of time, really kind of as a test case to see whether we should open this up to the whole state and let it happen, you know, year-round. And so, Table 6 that's attached to the memo is not entirely accurate, because what they've done effective October 11th, 2012, was ordered that for a period not to exceed five years, certain bowfishing, spearing, crossbow fishing could take place. However, they've also designated it that it has to, it can only be in certain lakes and streams, and then there's only certain species of fish that you can bowfish for. And that's kind of reflected in the chart. The only part of that particular order that's directly relevant to Alpena County would be that Fletcher Floodwaters in Alpena and Mountain Runse County has been designated as an area that you can't bowfish or spear in. So that's been designated by the state that you can't do it there. So even if Alpena County or Mountain Runse County wanted to allow it, they wouldn't be able to because it's been outlawed there. Okay? So, with that background that may not necessarily do a lot for your discussion, the question becomes, should we allow people to bowfish in the city or any designated area? From my perspective, and I think from the perspective of interim chief Jett, and also discussions with interim city manager Sunden, to us as a staff, I think the bigger issue is a public safety issue. And a public safety issue is, should we allow people to essentially have an exception to the ordinance that's already in place and let people bowfish or spear within the city limit? I think it's a public safety issue, so my recommendation is that council not allow that to happen, but you certainly have your rights to allow it to happen anywhere in the city or in any designated area that you wish to do it in, assuming it's done still in conjunction with state law. And that's a little difficult, because like I say, as far as Table 6 goes, certain times, certain species, I would have no idea off the top of my head what type of fish flow through the Thunder Bay River. I just, I don't have that experience, so I don't know. We'd have to leave it up to folks that are a lot more in tune with what type of fish are normally in there, and whether those fish can be speared or bowfished according to the Department of Natural Resources order and their table. Second issue is whether we should allow target shooting. And attached to the memo was also essentially state law and what's called a safety zone. Safety zone is any area that's within 150 yards or 450 feet of an occupied building, house, cabin, barn, or other building that's used in a farm operation, and state law prohibits you from hunting in there, discharging a firearm, crossbow, anything within the safety zone. Now, it also says, though, that the safety zone applies to hunting only, and it does not apply to indoor or outdoor shooting ranges. So, the question becomes, is target shooting in and of itself hunting? I think an argument can be made that it is hunting, but clearly, that safety zone around the building, it does not apply to indoor or outdoor shooting ranges. I think shooting range, shooting range to me means something different than putting a target up in your backyard and shooting at it. I don't think those are the same things legally. But, once again, it sounds like there may be an exception that you could consider. It'd be the same thing, you go back to 54284, and it's illegal now. To me, this is even a bigger safety issue than the issue about bowfishing. And bowfishing, if you're out in the middle of the river and you're floating around, that might be more acceptable to people. I don't know that anybody's necessarily going to be real comfortable with their neighbor, especially the way, you know, blocks are set up. I'm not sure that we're going to, you know, anybody's comfortable with anybody else shooting behind their house, behind their garage. Once again, it's a public safety issue, but, you know, council would be within its authority to consider such an activity, and you could allow it if you chose to do so. The last issue was whether we should allow some type of hunting or trapping of animals in the wildlife sanctuary. And several years ago, it was established by the city that no hunting or trapping should occur on Sportsman's Island unless it was a designated purpose. And the most common example is the geese, the geese hunt that has taken place, there have been designated areas in the city where we've allowed that to occur. I wasn't 100% sure on this. Greg may be able to speak to this, but I think when the city got that property in trust from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, there were some restrictions placed on it, and I think the city agreed that it would not allow activities of a hunting nature on there. It's supposed to be educational. It would, I guess, would not necessarily restrict somebody, or would not restrict the city, for instance, for pest control purposes. I mean, if there was a problem on Sportsman's Island or in the sanctuary that had risen to the point where it was causing some of the citizens in that area concern, or spilling over into the residential area, the city would be able to go in and essentially eradicate that, just like I think any citizen could do that right now. If you have a problem with possums, for instance, and you're, you know, eating a hole in the back of your garage, I think you're within your legal rights to eradicate those. I don't think, under that situation, if that's what you did from a discretionary standpoint, that we would be charging somebody with a violation of ordinance because of that. And clearly, you'd be able to allow any pest control agency or individual to come in and do that. I mean, they're authorized to do that. Regarding the hunting and trapping zones, I also attached this thing, and this kind of shows there are certain hunting and trapping zones, or certain restrictions inside those zones themselves. But once again, not only because of the way we got the land originally, but from a public safety perspective, I think it would not be our recommendation to council that you consider allowing any hunting or trapping in the wildlife sanctuary. I'm not sure if Chief Jett has anything that he wants to add, but I think he's in concurrence with the recommendation that's been given to council.
The only thing I'd want to add is the issue of the bowfishing was brought up before the Wildlife Sanctuary Board concerning the sanctuary itself. They did express concern, I do as well. It is a wildlife sanctuary. We now have a canoe kayak rental operator there, so we have more people even than before going out and canoeing, kayaking, and the like within the sanctuary, and it just doesn't seem to be a good fit to have, even though they, my understanding is, do have a rope or whatever attached to the arrow, that it is just not something to me that's compatible with the types of things that we're looking at as a sanctuary in terms of the public use, and really, the sanctuary itself and its purpose. The only time we really allow any kind of specific type of hunting of that, as Bill said, was when we have the goose hunt, which is designated for the purpose of controlling the population, and that's a very controlled event. You're only allowed to do it in certain areas. The police DPW worked very closely in terms of making sure that the area is safe, not only for the hunters, but for the general public. That would not be the case with other things, you know, it would just general purpose. Same on the island park. When we received it, it was to be used for educational purposes. I think the idea of just allowing people to come in and trap or hunt on the island would not be compatible with what the purpose of us obtaining that property from the DNR back in the mid-'80s. And so, their recommendation is certainly not there. Another area that was mentioned for bowfishing, which Bill didn't mention, was, and I'm not sure, and you may be able to correct me on this, but the thing to me, or Don, that one of the times when they were sighted, or was first brought to their attention, that it wasn't allowed, were they in the marina itself doing it?
Gee.
Doing some of the bowfishing?
I don't know if they ever got, if they were in the act of doing it, who they've been asking for quite a while, because the fish Bill is not familiar with, or like roughfish, or what you can bowfish for, carp, suckers, bowfin, garbite. Certain times of the year, those will spawn, so they come into the bowar, and they're up near the top of the water. Same thing in the river back by Island Park, the little cutovers through the island, you know, that are sometimes underwater, sometimes they're not. That's where they want to get in there and bow hunt, because you have been able to do it, guess what? They're big ones. So that's some of the interest in it. I mean, you know, it is up, it is up to council. But just so you know, too, bowhunting, shooting a bow in your backyard in the city of Alpena didn't used to be against any ordinances. That came in when Roger Anderson was chief of police, and I don't know if some kid took a shot at some lady's cat or something, but it would have been very late '80s, early '90s, and that's when the first talk about prohibiting you from shooting the bow and arrow in your backyard for target practice, or, you know, sighting it. And the interest from that comes probably from people like myself back in the days when all my boys were growing up. You know, you want to teach them to bow hunt, shoot an arrow, and so you're forced to try to get them out to the Sportsman's Club or someplace like that. I mean, you can do whatever you want, but there are safe ways to do some of these activities with some regulations. I mean, I saw Bill's recommendations.
I don't know if we're going to address these individually, or together as a group. I honestly, I wasn't completely aware that there was even any interest in trapping at the sanctuary. It kind of, it kind of goes against what the word sanctuary is. Can't say that I would ever be pro of that, and other than the instances that Bill talked about, we remember with the geese and such. Target shooting, I'm really not personally interested in changing that as well. I mean, like Don just pointed out, you really don't have to go that far to get to the Sportsman's Club or anywhere else for target shooting. Couple gentlemen did approach us with the bowhunting, and so that's what I kind of expected, I guess, to do the most discussion about. I'm not convinced that it's, that it's something that we can't change here. I guess in my mind, I understand where you're coming from with the safety issue. Anybody can be shot with anything, I guess, if you're reckless. I'd like to entertain maybe some, am I going in the right direction with everybody else with the other two items? If somebody, does anybody want to discuss the other two items to change the ordinance, the trapping and the target shooting?
No. No, on the target shooting, I agree with Bill. It's like, you know, there's a lot of people that would love to do that right in the city. Unfortunately, if you open that up, you're opening it up to...
I think it's too big.
Yeah, it's just too big. There's too many archers that aren't professional. There's a lot of guys that are real good and would never miss, and they put a little backstop in their backyard, and they're never going to miss, but then you get somebody out there who isn't so good.
Yeah.
And that's just, that's scary.
Yeah. I'd rather, I would just stay away from either of those, and I don't think there really needs to be a whole lot of discussion on either of them unless someone would like to.
Well, the other part of that, too, is for targets, only for designated shooting ranges and so on, 150 feet or 450 feet of any building, I can't think of a block or a city or a house that doesn't sit within that range to make it unsafe.
There's probably a couple, but...
Yeah. I just don't, I don't, yeah. As far as the bowfishing, though, I'm open to discuss that one.
Because the bowfishing, I've seen, I've seen it, I've seen it done. It's kind of a specialized kind of thing. I don't see everybody with a bow. I have a bow, I've had one, I've hunted for years. I've never really been interested in outfitting it for fishing, but I've seen what it does take to do it. So I don't, I don't know, and I was completely lost in your charts, I'm sorry. I had no idea what, I was looking for the Thunder Bay River in these charts, I didn't see anything so real clear. I'd have to say that anyone interested in bowfishing would have to do their homework, and they probably have. They probably understand it a lot better than I do. Mr. Blurry mentioned that, that I believe Sheboygan had opened their city limits up to bowfishing, and they have some water that goes through there. I don't know if anyone, if we did any kind of contact with Sheboygan. Was it Sheboygan that he mentioned, or? I don't know.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago that he came in, and I guess I, I wonder what their history has been with it?
I can somewhat address that. According to the chart that I have is regarding designated trout streams, open in Northern Pike spearing. They have Sheboygan County listed, and between December 1st through March 15th inclusive, they've got Tower Pond, I'm not sure where that would be in Sheboygan County.
68 in Tower.
It says during that time, from December 1st through March 15th, a hand-propelled spear may be used to harvest northern pike through the ice. So it allows it only during that time, only through the ice, only through a hand-propelled spear. Just one other thing in light of the mayor's comment. This order also says as follows. The seasons, gears, waters, and species where a spear, bow and arrow, or crossbow may be used are specified in the table below. Well, this table is a little less restrictive than the table that was attached to your memo. Okay? I apologize.
That's okay.
This is something I was just able to get today. And it talks about a spear, a bow and arrow, or a crossbow, and those essentially are open all year long now, okay, except in designated trout lakes and designated trout streams. I don't think any areas of the city are designated trout lakes or designated trout streams, by the way.
The river. Up to the Ninth Street Bridge is a designated trout stream.
Okay. Then you couldn't do it there pursuant to state law. So if council allowed it, you'd be violating state law, because this says you can spear, bow and arrow, or crossbow the entire year in all waters except a designated trout lake or a designated trout stream. So if that's in fact the case, if, where'd you say, Don, from?
Up to the ninth.
Up to the dam. That's trout fish can open all year, designated trout stream. The thing Bill's talking about, the spearing with December and all, that's spearing pike through the ice. That's outlawed in Fletcher Floodwaters, has been for years, but you can still go to Fletcher Floodwaters and shoot roughfish with a bow and arrow anytime of year.
Right, but he just, he just read that.
That's a designated trout stream. You can't even have a gaff hook, a spear, an arrow, anything like that, ever on a stream like that, because even though you could shoot a, you could shoot a carp with a bow and arrow, you can't ever shoot a rainbow trout or a steelhead with a bow and arrow, so they're not going to let you go anywhere near it and say, "Well, I was after this", you know.
So in the city of, in the city limits of Alpena?
The city limits, you could, you could allow it on the Thunder Bay River from the dam, the Ninth Street Dam, to the mouth of the river where it's like you're on.
Oh, just this way? I was thinking the other way.
Correct.
Okay. I was thinking the other way, and that was deemed pretty much most of it irrelevant. So...
A couple other things, let me ask. Spearing gear shall be limited to hand-propelled spears, rubber-propelled spears, spring-propelled spears, bow and arrows, and crossbows. Artificial lighting may be used. However, it shall be unlawful to use a rubber-propelled spear or a spring-propelled spear without being submerged and have the spear under control by means of an attached line not exceeding 20 feet in length.
Scuba divers, spearfishing underwater, that's what they're referring to.
Does it anywhere say in terms of the bow and arrow that that has to have a line attached to it?
No, but guys, those arrows are really expensive, and everybody knows, I know you don't bow hunt, Greg. If you shoot your arrow down into the water, you know, got it on a string, you just lost it.
I understand.
So it's fishing line was on there, not a string, it's a fishing line.
I guess the other thing I would make, point I'd like to make, though, is that if it says that it's allowed year-round, that is where I think both the Wildlife Sanctuary Board, and at least I would speak as being their liaison, that we would have concern within the wildlife sanctuary because of the fact of the use during the summer months. And maybe, I don't know, during the winter, or during, you know, what was before December through March, you're not going to have canoers, kayakers, other people out there, that may be one thing. But during the months when you do have activity, I think it would be much less advisable within the sanctuary.
In the sanctuary, they're already spearing the winter time right now, pike for pike. Guys go set up all the time. The only, the big time that these guys want to go out to get the roughfish would be, you know, they would probably be all done by the time school got out, because the only time you really could go out and do well is when the fish are spawning in the shallow water, and that's as soon as the water warms up in the spring. So the carp and stuff will start doing that like middle of May to middle of June, and then they're done, they're gone, they're back in the deep water, and you're not even going to see... And then they're done, they're gone, they're back in the deep water, and you're not even gonna seem to get them with the bow and arrow. And I don't- I never heard anybody talk about wanting to go out there and ride around all night looking for one. When there's other places, they'd be able to do it like Squaw Bay or Misery Bay, you know, where it is already okay to do it out behind the plant. And that's usually where they go out there, 'cause the water's a lot shallow. But that's what it is. There are certain times of year that they would probably wanna do it. And then if it was in- within two weeks, three weeks, the fish move on and they're- they're on to a different game.
I- I will admit, I don't bow hunt, nor do I spearfish.
You wanna ask a question?
I don't think so. But to be perfectly honest, I don't- we are surrounded by more small lakes and fresh water in this paradise we live in. I'm not sure it's necessary for us to be able to do it in every single inch of the water that we have access to. And I think within the city is one of those places that we should leave it out. I believe it should be left to Squaw Bay and other places where it can be done safely and without concern for where all the children are, where everybody else is. I just think it isn't a necessity that a sportsman can have just as much access, just as much success, and enjoy it just as much in a safer place like Squaw Bay or out in the city.
I came in, I have written down here, bowfishing seems like a reasonable exception. After listening to you and the state's logic, if you- if I hear this right, the state's saying if it's navigable, so if people can go through there with kayaks and canoes and tubes, then you can bowfish there. If it's not navigable, so there's not gonna be a lot of people, then you can't, which seems backwards to me. Seems like if you're gonna have boaters and swimmers, that that's not a good fit for bowfishing. You know, the other thing that kinda came to light today is I- because it seems confusing. And every time you made sense, you say however. You want to on something else, which isn't on you, it's just, you know, the state's... But, you know, then I wonder if we can even inform people so they can abide by the law and how easy it would be to even enforce anything. If it's this part of the river but not that part, you can use this kite but not that type, and I don't know how feasible that is. You know, mixing people and hunting, you know, recreation activities seems dangerous to me. Like ninety-nine times out of a hundred, no problem. You know, the hunter's gonna be conscientious, they're gonna pay attention, they're gonna see people. But the one time out of a hundred, if something goes wrong, that comes back on us, you know, for allowing having mixed uses, so to speak. So I would tend to think, I would tend to agree with Susan. If there's plenty of access outside the city, we're pretty small. There's a lot of access outside of it, so I guess I wouldn't be real comfortable changing the ordinance as it is.
I would agree with both of you, but it's just an issue of safety for me. We have our attorney's recommendation that we not change and make these permissible, and that's the way I feel.
Kind of throw one more thing out there. You make these decisions partly based on public safety. You know, I would ask this council, because this is a different council than we've had, and three out of five people are different, to seriously look at whether we should continue the goose hunt or not. You know, I see that same logic applied to that as well. Do we really wanna have a goose hunt in a sanctuary? Do we want that as a public safety issue? So I don't think this is the time to really look into that, but I would ask that maybe we have a discussion at a different time.
Where are you at, Mike?
I'm- I'm, as I'm listening more and more, I'm falling right in line with that as well, with the safety. I mean, first and foremost, that's what we have to put very forefront, is the safety of all the individuals within that sanctuary with other individuals and it being opened up to an entire season. And it's such a short season, I think there's enough areas around the area that we could do that safely somewhere else. And I really, I'm listening to the arguments, but I'm not hearing anything that is saying to me or screaming that this is something that we have to do within the city limits.
I guess I do have one other question I should've asked before. I- is it up to the DNR to enforce this, or do our police officers have to take this on? And it sounds like a nightmare to me. I don't understand how it could be enforced within the city limits.
I mean, our officers have on occasion in the past cited people for violation of game laws under state law. When they've witnessed it, the most common example would be there at the Ninth Street Dam. I mean, there've been times where people have been doing things there that they shouldn't have been doing. Hooking or snagging at certain times, but, and, you know, Joel can obviously speak to this better than I. From the standpoint of, do we have the resources to have an officer out there watching people fish all day and for violations of the DNR? No, not at all. I mean, the times that that usually happens is when, I don't wanna say they stumble along it, but it's some other disturbance creates the police being there, and then they witness somebody doing something they shouldn't be doing right in front of them. So, you know, they don't go down there routinely to see if people are following the game laws. They just don't have time and they don't have the resources to do that. But yeah, we would have the right to enforce it. You know, the state police could enforce it, the sheriff could enforce it. I mean, if any peace officer sees a violation of state law in their presence, they have the right to, you know, to request that a charge be issued for it.
It just seems to me that we have enough, just with the activities that go on in the river, especially the river. We have enough to do to sort of curtail some of that, especially in the- in the summer. People are on the river a lot.
That leaves me out alone as a island. It's not every day that I would even- that I would even venture a discussion that went- that went outside of what- what council has commented on. But I've just, I guess the argument for these- for these is that it's- that it is- that it is an allowable and licensed and legal thing to do in the state of Michigan. And I'm just not so convinced that it's a safety issue, or is it- or is it perceived as a safety issue because you see a guy with a bow in his hand? I guess, listening to what Don had to say as far as the seasons go and where they would be and what time they would be there, and I've never- I haven't studied, and I guess maybe- maybe it would be an argument from- from the sportsman's standpoint if they wanted to, 'cause it looks as though we can see which way this is gonna go. But the sportsmen might argue to do a study to just see, is this a safety issue? Has anyone ever in the state of Michigan been harmed by a bowfisherman? Or are we just seeing a guy or a woman with a bow and shooting towards the ground and seeing a safety issue? And I, so I'm a little hesitant to just say no, that we shouldn't open it up. And like I said, if this fails as it seems to, just by the discussion, it- maybe it would be in the best interest of the sportsmen that are interested in this to maybe come back with their own more information, I guess, and studies as far as what they know. They've- I would venture to guess that if this were legal already, the six, eight of us probably wouldn't even realize that it was. 'Cause we just would never have seen someone doing it. It wouldn't have surprised me if somebody told me that it'd been legal all this time, and we just didn't know. 'Cause it just doesn't seem like we're gonna see forty to fifty people on the shorelines and waiting out and on their boats. And I'm just convinced that it's more of a- that it's more of a confined sport. But that would be my argument for them, that it probably isn't so much too safety involved. But I do see all of your points, and I see the point of the- of the river picking up with canoeists and kayaking. But I don't- I just don't see that this poses any real specific safety issue to them. They'd probably go, "Holy crap, what's that guy doing?" And then they go home and they talk to somebody, or somebody calls in and they get educated on the fact that there is such a thing as bowfishing. And then they're like, "Wow, I've had a bow half my life. I didn't know you could fish with one, so how do you get it outfitted?" Next thing you know, you got more people doing the same thing. And then ten years from now, we wish we had never done it, 'cause there's forty, fifty people out there. I don't know where to go with that, but anyhow. So I guess I would argue for the sportsman, but it looks like that's where it's gonna go. And if that's where it's gonna go, then we just would take no action whatsoever.
Yeah, I think- I think it would be the hoof council to vote separately on each of the three issues, 'cause there are different issues, obviously.
But do we- oh, I'm sorry. Do we- we're not gonna change, unless someone poses to change the ordinance.
Well, that's true.
We really don't need to change.
We don't necessarily need to change anything, but if you wanted to, if you wanted to formally vote on each one, it would be making more sense to vote on it separately. As far as the bowfishing goes, certainly not advocating that you pass that, okay, that you allow that to occur. But if you allowed it to occur pursuant to the order, that would be consistent with state law. But if we would have to amend our ordinance to say, essentially to add a line to the end of that that says, "Except for bow hunting or bowfishing pursuant to, you know, state law." And this particular order, although it started on October eleventh in two thousand and twelve and it's in effect for five years, the DNR can rescind this order. It's essentially here for a five-year period, but, you know, they have rulemaking authority. They could, I guess, after a year or two years, maybe say, "Our studies suggest that it shouldn't be allowed in all waters." We should go back to that old table six that gave us certain months in certain waters. But right now, it's- state law opens it up to essentially every place that's not designated as a trout lake or trout stream, excepting their list of inland waters, which the only one that's even close to where we're at is the Fletcher floodwater.
Can the city put like an ordinance if they wanted to allow bowfishing in certain areas for just a certain time? I mean, is that something that we can restrict, where we say, "Okay, when canoeing season starts up," or something like that? Then you could say, you know, "Bowfishing is restricted, and these areas are only open in, you know, the spring or whatever." Don, when was the- when do they usually start coming into those areas? Is it late spring, you were saying? Late spring?
But I don't know. Bill had to check into that. I know that, like in Michigan, there's a lot of bans on Sunday hunting. Presdeal, Towns, Republic of Development, they've got an outright ban on all hunting, no matter what, within their confines, their development. You know, up on the north end of the Atlantic. I don't really know a lot of people that's been bugging to go bowfishing anywhere other than down the bowarver. I mean, I think it's certain, you know, on the practice in the backyard, and it's just, you know, there's a few that were interested in doing that. But, you know, there are a lot of places to get bowfish at the same time of year, right? You go right down the beach and do it, even though the beach is in the city. Once somebody's standing at the high watermark, which is where the beach is now, you can discharge your bow and arrow or a shotgun or whatever you want. There's really nothing the city can do about it. As long as you're at the high water. And what it is, some people just get offended because they see somebody discharge a shotgun in those areas. It might be Saturday morning, first light, and they see you carrying it legally in case. And it just, people get excited when they see that kind of stuff.
Does anybody wanna move to renew or change any of our ordinances on the topics we discussed?
Probably leave it as is, and maybe just extend the invitation, you kinda alluded to, if sportsmen can give us a better argument, we'll be free to change it again.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Bill, and thanks for your input, Don. Appreciate that. All right, communications and petitions. First, we have Colonel Tep, presentation on the state of the CRTC, sir?
Short briefing. Excellent. I've got one hard copy if you wanna pass for reference.
You have to wait for it.
Got it. Thank you. I don't know, that TV's not working. Excellent. Well, thanks Mayor Wellador, the city council. Thanks for inviting me to just talk real quick. I know the agenda's busy today. It looks like you got a lot of- lot of stuff to talk about. So I just wanted to cover some of the important things that's- it's really important for us to be able to get our message out there, kinda talk about where we are at the CRTC and where we're going in kind of the near future. Really kind of focused on this year right here, some of our highlights. Excellent. Well, just like your board up there, we have a vision and a mission. And our vision clearly is to be the premier training environment in the Air National Guard. So that's where we wanna go. Where we are today is we provide those support and facilities, really to support our combatant commanders and SOLO authorities, from the mayor all the way up through the governor. Next slide. See, we can get the obligatory charts here. And the only reason I put this up here is right at the bottom, we're kind of organized in three different directorates. And what we've got is we've got fifty-four different career fields at the base, which I think is important for everybody to understand. Everything from engineers to pilots like me, to medical technicians and supply officers and everything in between. So we've got a lot of people. There's a lot of opportunity and lots of options for people in the military, and specifically here in Alpena. Our overall organization, we have two hundred and thirty-six people, total military and civilian, that work at the base. On the full-time side, we have a hundred and seventy-seven. So a hundred and seventy-seven people split in half, about eighty-some militariety, eighty to ninety, eighty-some civilian. Unfortunately, on one October, as a result of the National Defense Authorization Act that was recently signed, we're gonna lose twenty-five full-time positions. On the plus side, they're gonna transition to part-time positions. So when you look at these slides, you'll see, well, we lose twenty-seven percent of our total full-time military force, but then on the other hand, we gain another percentage, a decent percent of about twenty-six percent in our total part-time personnel. So that's a good thing for us. It's gonna be a change- changing dynamic. Instead of our full-time force, we're gonna be a little bit more part-time, have to be more efficient, which I'll show you in a minute. We're already pretty efficient. We're gonna have to be more efficient. Next slide is our resources. At the top, there's all our property. We lease six hundred and forty-six acres. If something were to ever happen to the CRTC, the total replacement cost is about three hundred and eighty-two million. So we have a lot of facilities, a lot of structures, and a lot of important equipment and acreage. Down in the bottom, we've all heard in the news, you know, we're up against, not only do we have an NDA personnel reduction issue, but we were faced with sequestration, which did go into effect, half a trillion-dollar cut, you know, across the board. And then we also have a continuing resolution, sometimes referred to as budget uncertainty. You can see right now, our normal budget on any given fiscal year is about thirteen million, and that's just our- that's kind of our discretionary spending, and then our payroll's right around six million. That's not affected as much, but currently we're only at spending at about twenty-six percent. So we're really, we've had to pull the purse strings really tight this year. And that's been a challenge, you know, and we- and that's kind of impacted frankly, the entire military. And what you've seen is probably a little bit of a reduction in utilization of the CRTC, which then on a second and third order effect, obviously affects our businesses and hotels and things like that. So this year, you might see a little bit of a reduction in overall utilization. The summer may not be as big as last year. Capabilities here, you can read all those, but I do wanna point out two things that you may or may not be aware of. If you go down there, about six or seven lines where it talks about the large instrumented airspace complex, we actually do have the largest airspace complex east of the Mississippi. So we, in the country, east of the Mississippi, Alpena's number one. The airspace starts at the thumb, goes all the way up to Alpena, and then bends around toward Gaylord to the west. We actually manage and own all that right here in Alpena. So we run the whole complex to include a couple ranges and some overwater stuff and things like that. So that's important. The next one is the demonstrated on UAS capability unmanned aerial system, which you've heard referred to locally as the drone project. So we have already demonstrated that capability at the Grayling Range, which is part of our organization. organization right near, in between Gaylord and Grayling. Last year, we flew about 300 unmanned missions on that range. So we've already worked, and, you know, the people, I was in on the ground floor with Explorer Solutions, working a lot of these things, and they know that, and that's part of the plan moving forward. So I thought that was an interesting tidbit of knowledge. So who comes to the CRTC? In the last three years, right about 50,000 people, which is great, and it's been good for, last year was a great year, about 20,000, a really good business here in Alpena. You can see all the different categories and type of people. We do mostly DOD type of work, but my next slide is going to point to what we do really for the city of Alpena, and it's quite a bit. You know, you can see right around 11% of our total people, last year we had 20,000 come in, 11% were non-Department of Defense. So here's a chart. Unfortunately, that picture didn't show up well, but that's actually a picture of Alpena that we got overhead from the Civil Air Patrol over the downtown, but you can't see it. I kind of broke it up. This is just Brian Teff's for the quad there of how we support the community, the things we do mainly in emergency services. We have a great relationship with the fire and police, and that's awesome. Education, Alpena schools, Alpena Community College, we, and the numbers in parentheses, by the way, are the number of people in the last two years that have come to the CRTC that we've supported. Youth programs, which are very important to us, you can see those there. And then the community outreach, that's kind of a big number. Obviously, we do our Military Ball, we hosted the USO Show, we've done one open house event, and we alternate that with the airshow. So this year, because we did the airshow last year, last summer, this year will be an open house event this summer. So we try to open that up to the community, and we're doing, we're trying to think of new ways that we can expand our outreach into the city of Alpena. Our next slide is just our efficiency, which I talked about. On the military side, and a lot of this is mumbo jumbo, but if you look, because I brief this type of slide to a lot of different audiences, but if you look on the right, in essence, we were only funded at 76% of what we should have been authorized full-time to begin with. So when you take in those cuts of 25, we end up in one October, we're real, real lean. You know, we started out lean, now we're going to be skinny, because we're going to be about 55% funded, so we're going to have to find more efficient ways to do business. If you look at that cost model chart, you can see we've actually, over the last three years, our cost per training day provided, the cost to us, has gone down quite a bit, so we're becoming more and more efficient. I think it'll probably level off a little bit this year, because it's going to be tough to maintain and drive that cost down. But I like to tell people, we have, that last bullet I put in a tellecs there, tremendous capability of men, manpower and cost. And I think we've got it. Here's just some of our highlights on the next couple slides. You'll see this stuff here this summer. Northern Strike, that's a big event for us, that's a regional exercise. I think you may have seen some people run around downtown Alpena last summer, about July. Well, we're going to do that again in August. That's a big event for us, brings in several hundred, up to thousands of people into the Alpena area. Last year, we had 19 units from seven states plus Canada, Latvia. So we'll have the Canadians and the Latvians here again this year, and we appreciate all your support. I mean, Alpena's always great, and they will be again this year, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there for you. Again, on the bottom there, the Grayling Air Gunnery Range, under that first bullet there, the Naval Special Warfare, UAD, UAS, that's Unmanned Aerial Vehicle, Unmanned Aerial System, synonymous with drones. So when you hear all those terms, you also hear remotely piloted aircraft, which is RPA, so all four of those terms, you can kind of mix and match. They did a lot of good stuff, and they were actually right on the leading edge of helping those people stand up that mission. Couple other things, our medical program, it's a great program. If you're familiar with the program MASH back from the 70s and the 80s, how they set up the hospital tents, that's what we did at Alpena, that's what we currently do at Alpena. Unfortunately, the program's going to be moved, effective one October, but we were the, one of two schoolhouses in the country that taught people that hospital mobile system, and they did great work, 1,500 students from across the country, four mobile training teams, you can see Korea trip, but unfortunately, that's kind of a lost for us. That got rolled into the National Defense Authorization Act, so that program's being moved to Camp Olus, Texas. On the support side, the two pictures there are, one on the top there, that's actually a brand-new project that we have started here in April. We actually got that through the budget before sequestration and all the other things, which is awesome. So you can see that's a $1.4 million. We almost always use local contractors for that, so bringing that business back to Alpena. They're going to be building a new classroom and doing a bunch of demolition for us. The other thing you'll see is on the last bullet up there, we're going to have a front gate renovation, not a huge project, but $500,000 project that should start here, hopefully after April, when our budget gets a little bit better, we should be able to work through that. Picture on the bottom center, Levin, he was there for our, and Mayor Wellagore was there as well, but we did our troop quarters opening and starbase grand opening last year in April, so he's a big supporter of what we do. Couple slides left, our community partnership, this is really important to us, and we recognize, you know, of all the seven places I've been stationed, this is by far the most military-friendly community I've been around, so, and I appreciate that, it's a great place. And our new, our new term is we're motivated champions for the Alpena community, so that's what we're, that's what we're all about. You can see all the things that we do. I do want to point out just a couple things there. The Alpena Base Community Council, that's a new initiative that we're trying to set up to provide a little more formalized process for how we can actually speak to our message, get our message out there, provide, get the information to the community in the most efficient way possible. So Mayor Wellagore's been part of that, he was there at the first meeting we had at the base a month or so ago, so we're trying to work that and develop that. The other thing is we do try to work, we've been supporting the Wildcat Athletic Program, and we do lots of local police and fire, I know we've got some people in the back room there, but a lot of that training's important. You can see our annual, in fiscal year 12, when we run in the military, one October to 30 September, our estimated economic impact was over $97 million. That's based on these numbers, using a rollover factor of, I think it's 4.5 from the Chamber of Commerce here in Alpena, so that's our estimated impact on the community. Couple current initiatives, just two bullets there I want to point out. The first one, if you look on the second one that's indented, the first indent under the first paragraph, marketing's really, really important for us, and we believe that increased utilization equals increased efficiency. So that's what I go around the country touting to a lot of different groups, you know, if you, the more you come to Alpena and places like this, the more efficiencies you realize. So I get out there and talk to that a lot. Secondly, if you look at the bottom bullet, third one down, we are aggressively pursuing a launch and recovery element for an RPA, which again is synonymous with drone and UAS and UAV, and what that would be is that would actually be the aircraft that would take off and land, we would control that from Alpena, and then if you read in the papers, Battle Creek, they've got the black boxes, it's called the Remote Split Ops Operation, where once the aircraft got airborne, they would take it and then fly it from there. So we, we're really aggressively pursuing that type of mission. We're working that through the military channels, and that would be a military-only mission, separate from the civilian drone project. But there's a lot of synergies between the two, so it makes sense to go down the path we're all kind of working together, so, and that would be a good thing. That could bring in another 50 to 70 people, and that would be huge for the Alpena community, all the different aspects to it. So here's our near-term way ahead, the, where we're going and how we're going to get there. We need to continue to do our job like we're doing it now, demonstrating superior mission capability and support. We're out trying to articulate the need for a different, or an add-on capability like a launch and recovery element. That's important to us. And then the last two, we're supporting our airmen and civilian personnel and kind of working through the NDAA problem, because it is, it is a problem for our people. You know, we are going to have to, a couple people will or may have to retire before they plan, you know, there's some things that are going to change, so we're trying to work through all that. But that's really what I'm focused on in my job, those four areas. And summary, I think you'll see that I underline the real important things. You know, I'd like to say that we do, I think we really provide a tremendous value for America, and we're super efficient, and our people are extremely proud of what we do. They take a lot of pride in what we do at the base, and that's a great thing, and I love, I love working there, and it's a great place. And the last slide is just a picture that we have, an overhead shot, current one, and then on the top is our website. It's a public website, we started about a year and a half ago, so you can get that from any computer. Thanks for your time. I know I probably took too much time, I tried to race through it, but I just want to get the message out, kind of, and hopefully you understand where we're at, where we're trying to go, and we're working together.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience towards the end of our.
We'd love to see it come in subsequent years, like this community doesn't quite understand fully what you guys do out there, and how much that benefits us, so it's great that you came in and talked to us.
Do it anytime. Thank you.
Next up, we have Detective Lieutenant Keck from the Huron Uncover Narcotics Team with his annual report and budget request.
Hello.
Hello.
I know there's a couple people here I've met, some of the people I haven't. My name's Lieutenant Keck, I'm from Michigan State Police. October, I got assigned here to the Huron Narcotics Team. I came to you from the Straight Sire Narcotics Team of the Saint Marie, and evidently I brought the water with me, I see today. Before that, I was at the Saint Marie post. Prior to that, I was a trooper with the Traverse Narcotics Team, so I've got quite a bit of experience with narcotics. And initially, out of a preschool, I was going to the Cadillac post. So I pretty much spent all my time luckily in the seventh and eighth districts. I know we sent you a copy of, I believe you got our annual report as well? Yep. That goes in a little bit more detail than I'm probably going to tonight. I just wanted to cover the highlights that last year, like I said, I got here in October, the team took 168 complaints total, 130 of those cases were in Alpena County, and 91 of those were actually right in the city limits. That's pretty much just a reflection on the fact that you're the largest metropolitan area in the, in the area that we cover. When I was up at Straight Sire Narcotics, 90% of our cases occurred right there in the city of Saint Marie. Before that, when I was down in Cadillac, they were all inside the city Cadillac, so. As far as significant activity, I'm sure some of you are aware that we recently made some arrests, and some people who committed a meth lab inside your city. On the topic of the meth labs, we changed the way those are, those are basically handled now. With the team, we currently have three people that are meth responders. As soon as the next school comes up, I'll be going to the container program. So in the past, when you had the meth responses, that usually fell to either the local entity that found the meth lab or to one of these teams, and that's pretty costly. Now, basically, the state of Michigan has set up a container program. People who are container certified can come to your location, take those things, package those up, take them to the container, and then the company comes and picks them up from the container. So it's, it's a significant savings. I guess the other, the other large thing that we were able to address was a city complaint, a county complaint with some breaking and earnings, where an elderly lady was assaulted by two suspects. Thankfully, the team was able to assist in locating all three of those people, and they're all still here. Like I said, we've got a little bit more in those packets. It comes down to the request for funding, it's spelled out a little bit more in detail in the letter that was sent over. Basically, we're asking for a total of $15,874 from each of the entities that's involved with the.
I have a question. Could you tell us the average cost of cleanup of a meth lab?
I've been on the team quite a while. It's all dependent on the amount of the materials they're on hand. If you have things, certain chemicals cost more to dispose of. Most of the things that we take are going to be unknowns, but if you have things like lithium metals, those add up very, very quickly, and they're very, very expensive to actually take away. Average, I would say, you're talking about $7,000 to $10,000 per lab. We had one in my final week at Straight Sire Narcotics, that we had three blankets that were 10 by 10, that were stacked this high with waste. The people were just basically, they were scared that the police were going to find this stuff, so they just kept it in their basement. I couldn't even hazard to guess what that would have cost, because most of these things that we're talking about, $7,000 to $10,000, they fit on a 10 by 10 blanket. So three stacks and stuff like that, that's pretty costly. There's definitely, there was a need to adjust the way that, that was being done, because you used to have to call a hazardous material contractor out of Grayling, excuse me, Grand Rapids or Detroit, and wait for them to come up. So the state of Michigan, the DA, basically came up with a better, better alternative, which is actually setting up these pods, they call them. If you do have something that, most of the labs that we're finding now, I think the last red phosphorus lab that I had was in Cadillac on TNT 12 years ago, those are, those are huge, and if that came up, we would still have to bring a person up here to handle that. But there's, there's actually funding for that now. Most of these are the one-pot labs, and unfortunately, there, you can do it in the backseat of a car.
And so now the container folks can take care of that? And we don't have that expense anymore?
No, no, you won't have that expense anywhere that's someone who's basically in one of these multi-jurisdictional task force. The state police comes out, they send one of their people. I think, right now, the only people who are container-trained are MSP personnel, and like I say, I'll be one of those as soon as they run the next school down there in Lansing. But yeah, those people come out, we basically overpackage it, just like you have to do with any hazardous waste, and we take it to the pod, which I believe ours is in open light.
Welcome to Alpena, Lieutenant Keck.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it.
It's been different so far.
You've been lucky.
Well, I wouldn't come here if I didn't, didn't like the area, so, I guess I've been lucky to be all the way to Michigan my entire career, so.
Lieutenant, I'll make copies of your report for the rest of council, I may be the only one.
I think I put it in a purple folder, but yeah, if anybody wants one, let me know.
I don't know how many questions I have for you right now. We have had some questions in the past as far as how, looking at that and kind of seeing, I suppose from a personal standpoint, fewer meth lab arrests than I would have expected a few years ago. It seemed as though we might as well brace ourselves for quite a bit, but would you say we seem like a pretty good area as far as that, or?
I think we've been lucky three, just because of the isolation. I mean, Alpena's one of those places you've got to want to come here to go here. If you start looking though at Straight Sire Narcotics and the complaints they've taken and where the labs have gone, it's coming this way. They had, just two months ago, they had a dump site in Mount Renzi County, that individual's from Gaylord. We've handled quite a few of them up in Sheboygan, and yeah, I guess I could speak to the fact that it is here, and I don't think this is an isolated incident. And like I said, it's so easy to do anymore. It used to be when it's a red phosphorus lab or something to that effect, you walked in and it's a huge undertaking, and somebody really had to know what they, what they were doing. Now there's people posting on YouTube how to do it.
Sure.
You know, and unfortunately, these people, they show each other how to do it, so, you know, it's, if you find one, you can almost guarantee there's two or three more. We've been trying to be really proactive with going out and doing presentations with fire departments, capoeira services, and let them know what to look for, and hopefully it's something, yeah, we can nip in the bud, if there's some awareness in the community of what to be looking for, because quite honestly, there's police officers out there who don't know what they're looking at. I handled a dub site over in Gaylord, and those same individuals were in the Western UP. The troopers tried to stop them, and they took off, and they were throwing all the components out the window of the cars as they were going down too. And once they got them in custody, the trooper went back, picked up the one pot and was standing on the. on the side of the road, had no idea what it was. Figured that might be what it was, but called the team up there. And I mean, he's basically holding the bomb at the same, and he didn't know it. So I guess for our part, getting out there and educating people, first responders, firemen, and like I said, people who go into these homes, you know, the healthcare workers and things, to let them know what they're actually looking for and then working with your local stores. We had a couple up in Newberry. Those complaints got solved just because the people at the Ace Hardware knew what they were looking for. And when the people came in to buy three of the components, they said, "Well, they're not buying anything but three components that he said are meth-related," so they gave us a call.
Awesome.
So, I mean, yeah, the majority of the complaints that we're handling are still, they're related to prescription drugs.
Yeah.
So it's unfortunate. We're still doing the container program where we're taking back those narcotics, so people can come and turn those in at the state police post and we'll dispose of those. So if they've just got them hanging out at their house, you know, unfortunately, kids know that that kind of stuff is, you know, you go home and look at your medicine cabinet and the stuff that's just sitting in there, you know.
Those statistics from what you've collected are astounding. If you haven't been to the website, it's just, it's mind blowing.
And we're also trying to, since I've been over here, I brought a program that we did at Straits Area too. If we make arrests for prescription, basically whether it be doctor shopping, selling prescription drugs, when those people are arrested, it goes onto what we call the RX list and it gets sent out to all the local doctors. So they know, you know, just to kind of basically watch, you know, if this person has had these problems in the past, maybe it's something they need to, you know, consider when that person's coming in. You know, why is somebody from Gaylord coming over here, you know, to Alpena to seek treatment over here instead of just doing it in Gaylord, or vice versa. It's basically the tip of the met in the Eastern UP.
All right. Thank you, sir.
If there is anything you ever need to know, you got my phone number?
Again, welcome to Alpena. Good to have you here. I have to ask you a question and it may not be fair because you've come in to this situation late in October, like you said. And from my position, I wouldn't begrudge a nickel of anything we can put in Hunt's budget. The primary thing we're here for is to keep our citizens safe, I would think, and everything else will come after that. But I did ask the question about this time a year ago, if Hunt would consider a millage for funding, given the way the education millage went down in flames a week ago. I don't know how successful it would have been, but had you been privy to any discussions about why that track didn't go down?
No, no. I mean, when I first got here, quite honestly, there was the issues going on in Alcona, so that was, and then the obvious issues that I had to address when I first got here. So, but no, nobody's approached me with that, or it wasn't carried over. But again, you know, this was an unusual circumstance taking over the way I did, so some of the things, you know, I'm kind of picking up pieces.
Well, I didn't mean to pick on you, but...
No, no, I understand.
This council, Council of Euro had to put $800,000 of our savings to balance an $8 million budget, so we have to look at every nickel.
Correct.
I appreciate you taking them well.
And I want to thank the city. I mean, the city has been one of our strongest allies on the team with the MSP. Quite honestly, the officer that we have from your city police department is invaluable. And I don't know if that's just a reflection on that individual officer, but it would be hard to operate without him.
Thanks again.
And next up we have Roger Witherby from the Wildlife Sanctuary Board. He's the chair with his annual report.
I think you have the annual reporting packet, so I want to go through that. I just, if you had a chance to look at it, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Budget will be going to staff and when we address budget, we've been real thorough along and have, over the years, spent less and less and I'll tell you, this past year and you've had a lot of exposure to what's been happening on the island in the last few weeks and there's more positive things that have happened out there as far as maintenance and upkeep than have happened in a long time, and it's just a beautiful spot. The canoe kayak business that Aaron Rottfeld is having weakened, all kinds of positive comments about that. People are really enjoying that facility. We are looking at dealing with some of the invasive species within the 500 acre sanctuary and that's a very expensive endeavor and we're looking for grants and assistance in that area. But come August, it's hard to kayak or canoe for that because of the weed situation. But the island's in real good shape and the sanctuary in general has been. We're looking forward to Mike Kijorski's project with the bridge and we're working on, and I think you're aware of this, developing a field lab there in the interpretive centers. We're looking at some other options for that, so we'd like to put a field laboratory out there for students to use. We're already getting requests from teachers to have classes on the island here in April and May, so... But if you want to have any questions, I'll keep it short.
I have comment. Youth volunteer toward IBC and those kids live and breathe that island every year and can hardly get there quickly enough to hell down.
I'm glad you brought that up.
And I appreciate your posting.
Because without them, we could do a lot of what we do. They do a tremendous job for us.
That's good to hear, but they really take a lot more away than you can imagine, I'm sure. They love every minute of it and all the people that work with you are just excellent teachers and I'm so proud of it for you at Alpena.
It's a great asset for the community and we really appreciate your support very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right. Thank you to all three of our presenters this evening, only looking for budget requests, but just to give us a little bit of insight on what they do for our economy, for sure. Tonight we have no unfinished business. We have three items of new business, 2013 water and sewer tap in fees.
Basically, every year, we about the same, we try to come in when construction season starts and adjust our tap in fees. And this is the fee that we charge to businesses, homeowners, et cetera, when a new tap is installed or one that's been out of service for a number of years is re-initiated and needs to be replaced. We typically try to do this to cover inflationary increases, et cetera. This year, we looked at a 3% increase on our water and sewer tap in fees and that ranges on the sewer tap in fee, an increase of about $78. And then water varies between a $92 and $125 increase depending on the size of that service. This is, and what this is based on, it's the same fee charged to every individual that makes the tap. Some are, the water may be on their side, they may pay a little more than if we charged them individually, but then in a lot of cases, the water mains on the other side of the road, we have to go all the way across from it. So this is just an average of what it costs us to physically do that work. Requesting council approval, this will be a budget, or not a budget, but...
Fee schedule?
Or the fee schedule? Fee schedule adjustment.
So Rich, our 3% increase is pretty much toe in size with the increase in the cost of materials and fuel and stuff.
Material, I mean, it's that, it's that, just the copper or the PVC pipe, it's the labor to do the install, the labor to restore the street, put the curb and gutter back, et cetera. So it's costly, but it's very costly to reconstruct that street once it's done.
Yeah.
I move the approval of the new 2013 tap in fees.
A second.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Island?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
The Alpena Veterans, County Veterans Council has requested permission to install a marble monument in Veterans Memorial Park near the intersection of Washington Avenue and Second Avenue. Monument would be approximately two feet by two feet made out of marble with a brass plate attached identifying the Alpena County soldiers who died in the Vietnam War. They've also requested to add a small bench in the future, not at this time, but as funding becomes available, they would like to add that at that same location. The city council's approval, we intend on having the monument installed for dedication on Memorial Day, May 27, 2013. It's my recommendation, the city engineers, the request by the Alpena County Veterans Council, be approved. All costs, they will be bearing all costs on this, so there'll be no cost to the city. Mr. Hunter's here. Is he in the back? Okay, there. So if you have any questions?
No. No. I'll guard you against the free memorial, I mean.
No.
I'll be all with debt and gratitude to Mr. Hunter who found this bronze plaque in the basement of the professor museum.
That's correct.
And he chaired the group that made this award possible, so we should never forget that. I appreciate my neighbor who's helped the city so much. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to thank Dick, your hundreds of people like him spent hours, like we're bringing, putting it up and taking it out. Mr. Solinger, one of the colleagues.
Motion on that one?
I'd like to make that motion. So you approve the county veterans' request to have this memorial?
Island?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Aye.
And this is usually when staff comes before city council, we'd like to have all the information and present it to you, but in this situation, that was not possible. On March 13, Greg, Stephen, Steve Schultz, myself met with Jeff Gray and Russ Green of Noah about a potential project in front of a river bay adjacent to the Noah facility over there. And this stemmed from, it's a project that Mike Kijorski also is going to be a huge player in, to install access down to the river, a dock, and some training facility right there on the river bay. And Mike was actually ready to go fire up the excavator and moved in there and started doing it. And Jeff Gray kind of held him off and what we're looking at is utilizing those donated services. I confirmed with Mike in some of our meetings when we were meeting on the bridge, that he is still intends on going ahead with this project over at Noah, even with the bridge project. But what we'd like to do is take that donated time, material and services, to leverage that for up to $100,000 in coastal zone management funds through their grant program. This would be a 2014 project is what they're looking for funding for right now, for projects for. What we're doing, city staff, engineering department is working to design kind of a, for lack of a better term, a stair step approach. Basically, it would be a series of seating walls with a wider walkway between those seating walls so that you could meander back and forth to get down barrier free to the water's edge. They'd like to have a dock along the water's edge so that the students who are over there, they run a ton of students through the Noah facilities to do water quality testing, river education, et cetera. Problem is, they don't really have a good way to get them down to the water's edge. So this facility or this project would instruct that. We also, last Friday, Russ Green and I met with Steve Wilson of the U.Sailing Club, they also have an interest in moving their operation over there. So we're going to look at trying to incorporate that in there as well. Unfortunately, this is all, this is all coming together really at the last minute. Applications are due March 29th, so we've got to assemble this as quickly as we can. And we've been trying, with Russ's, Jeff Gray and Russ Green's schedule, it was difficult for us to keep the meetings. We were able to get that, we discussed it. We're actually kind of in a conceptual design stage right now. We're putting the application together. I started writing it last week and I'm going to send some of the parts over to Jeff Gray and Russ Green for them to complete their sections, kind of a group effort to make this happen. What we'd like to do is just ask council's permission for us to proceed forward with it, with developing the application packet. What we'll do is, once we have the packet complete, we'll bring this back to the April 1st meeting with a resolution of support for city council's adoption. The intention being that other than staff time, there would be no out of pocket costs from the city, that it would be basically coastal zone management being managed by Mike Kijorski's donated services. The donated services are an eligible match fund also. Basically, we just wanted to get this before council, so they were aware of it before it actually went in. And if, when we get to the resolution portion, if council decides it's not something they want to pursue, we could always write a letter and offer a grant back if so desired, but...
It's great. And I think it's just, probably the one thing I've been impressed with the most in six years is how many staff members and community members go out and get grants to improve our community at no real cost to the city or very little. And in this case, it's our time and energy, which staff is typically willing to do, so... No, it's a great project and you can't beat no cash contribution, can you?
So everything will go in by the 29th except the resolution. And the only reason we couldn't have it today is we don't have the numbers that we always put in there in terms of what the actual cost and the match and so forth, and that's what we're still working on. We'll have it done in time for the 29th, just could not have it for tonight. So we're going to do it after the fact and we have, on a few very rare occasions, done this before, just because of time.
You don't actually need an action from us just to go forward?
No, as long as you concur with us and moving ahead with it, we'll bring back the resolution. If for any reason you decide you don't want to go through with the project, you can turn down the resolution. We would simply inform the DEQ that we would be withdrawing the application, so there's no commitment on the city's part at this point.
That's usually the case. I would just ask, I guess, when you come back, whether if we could see where you're talking about on the river?
Yeah. They'll remask them.
I had some drawings.
I figured so.
I couldn't even hardly figure out where they're at from the drawings we had. That's how early in the states they are right now.
Okay.
But we, Steve and I actually, after Friday's meeting, late Friday afternoon, about 4:00, we had a meeting and discussed expanding what we were actually looking at, so that's how much it's evolved. If we do it right now.
Okay. Everybody here?
I'm new here.
You're watching All About Alpena.